Welcome to the Wednesday, January 3rd, 2018 Planning Board, Amherst Planning Board meeting. The first order of business are minutes.
You do have minutes.
We do.
They were emailed to you and they're also on your table.
So maybe take a minute and if you're ready to...
I move the minutes to be approved?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. This is not important at all, but I just wanted to see if anyone else had the same I mean that I did. On page five, the second paragraph, the question that I had about the sidewalk was not the crosswalk to the New Market Center, but the crosswalk from the bike path to the first building. There was, there's the driveway to the New Market Center and then there's a driveway that goes off of that into the proposed complex. And I didn't, my question was, is there a crosswalk across that driveway, not across to the New Market Center? And I believe that the applicant answered, pointed out in a revised drawing or something that there was a crosswalk.
There is a crosswalk.
So...
That should be reworded.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. It's not important, but...
Do that. Get the record straight. So we're okay with that modification? I see a lot of nods. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. That passes. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Abstain.
Yeah, against. Two abstentions.
Who's abstaining? Mr. Stutzman.
And Jack.
Five. Five and two. Okay.
We don't have any timed items tonight, so never say never, but we, planning zoning, zoning subcommittee report?
So we had a full house tonight at ZSC and a very long and interesting discussion, mostly about the town center and housing issues. They're sort of intertwined, or they're very much intertwined. And we've been working on, I think I told you last time, that we had developed a list of potential housing amendments that we could, that the planning board might want to pursue. And at the last ZSC meeting, which was a combination planning board meeting, there were a number of you were there, we had whittled the list that we had developed down to four or five items that seemed to be of higher priority. And so our discussion was around those issues, those issues being townhouses, form-based code, 40R condos, and residential infill with a waiver to change some dimensions. And we don't, first of all, there's not going to, unless a miracle happens, there's not going to be anything ready for the spring relating to these issues.
Unless what?
Unless a miracle happens. I mean, we're just, it's just too far off. And in fact, we're not, we're not really sure, yeah, we haven't really defined a course to take. We haven't defined an agenda yet. I think there was the most interest and enthusiasm or potential seemed to come from the idea of pursuing a 40R in conjunction with form-based design standards and that might allow townhouses and condos in the area of the town center that we talked about at the last forum, that might include a number of zones around the town center, the BG zone, the BL zones, maybe some of the RG zones. So a 40R is an overlay that allows denser development than is otherwise allowed by the underlying zoning, allows it by right in conjunction with affordable housing production. It seems like a way of accomplishing a few goals at once while also, if it's done right, making it palatable and comfortable for people if we use form-based design standards as part of the proposal. It's something that is usually pursued with the help of a consultant to help define the area, to help define the language of the 40R zoning overlay, the characteristics that we might want to encourage or pursue and to help the town go through the state application process for 40R. So it's complicated. We, you know, we conceivably could do it ourselves, but it's not, that's not the usual path. So I think we're, we are still in the early stages of considering that route. We don't know how much it would cost, for one thing. We would need town meeting approval to spend the money to hire a consultant if that's the route that we would choose. So anyway, that's where we're at. We're still feeling our way forward. Again, the overall aim is to address the housing issues that the town has, affordable housing, lack of housing overall, for, to meet the demand that there is for people who want to live in or near Amherst and in or near the university. So I think we're still talking. We would still appreciate feedback from the planning board. We're also, we've added to our, to the list that we had previously developed, we think we also want to take a look at supplemental dwelling units, perhaps making them a little bigger or changing how, you know, how they can happen in conjunction with a single-family home. Because there is existing language that is generous for creating supplemental units, but it may not be enough. We've gotten feedback that the size is not quite big enough, perhaps. So that's where we are with town center and housing. Staff reported that there may be some adjustments that need to be made or probably should be made to recreational marijuana regulations in light of the recent release of the draft regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission. Staff is also working on revamping or revising the sign bylaw and revising the demolition delay bylaw. I'm not sure if any of those will be ready for the spring, but hopefully, hopefully something will be ready.
Comments?
Is there any reason why the increase in the size of the supplementary unit couldn't be ready for Springtown meeting? It seems to me a simple issue of substituting one number for another number. No more language would be required, as I can see. And if we think that's a good idea, it seems no point in putting it off since there have already been requests to the planning department for slightly larger, or suggestions that slightly larger spaces might be more useful.
Yeah, so that easily could be done. It's a question of, you know, whether the board and you all decide that it's a really high priority. We recently proposed a revision to the supplemental dwelling unit language that pretty significantly expanded what is possible. Whether we want to go back to the well so quickly is a question, I guess.
What does the board think?
What is the existing number right now that's supposedly on the small side?
Right, so for a detached supplemental, so there's several kinds of supplemental units. For a detached supplemental unit, a second unit on an existing lot, it can be no more than 800 square feet or 900 square feet if it's handicapped accessible. And feedback that we've gotten is that that's a little small, that maybe 1,000 or 1,200 even is preferable. Now, 1,200 is not that much smaller than my house, so it's not, so that's, you know, that's another house.
If I may, so 800 gets you easily a one-bedroom apartment. 900 gets you a two-bedroom apartment and 1,000 gets you a three-bedroom apartments.
So I was going to make a point and raise a question. So the point was that, it's my understanding that the recent zoning reform legislation that didn't yet pass last year, but also the governor's current proposal for zoning reform included a provision that would allow these units by right up to 900 square feet, which ours can go up to if they're handicapped accessible, but not if they're not. So there's already a bit of a benchmark there in terms of what might be coming down the pipeline for regulation about accessory dwelling units. And then the question was to staff, we'd mentioned that the zoning subcommittee meeting, that there have been a number of applications of this nature, but that the regulation doesn't allow for a large enough building. So were the applications of the nature where the, I mean, they have to meet the requirements of the bylaw, such as the owner's going to live in one house, was, were there any other commonalities amongst the applications or other restrictions in the current language that we should be aware of?
I think it was really the size that was of concern to people when they came in, particularly if they had an elderly relative or maybe two elderly relatives who wanted to live together and maybe one of them was handicapped. They really felt like they needed more space. They needed, they wanted a second bedroom for guests to come. They wanted more living space. They wanted a bigger kitchen. So it was really just that they needed more square feet and they weren't, and they were, most of them, working with architects who were having trouble getting what the people needed in the 900 square feet.
And based on that experience, would, for example, 1,000 square foot allowance with 1,100 square feet for a handicapped accessible unit have addressed their concerns? Or is that not still big enough?
I'm not sure what the number is, but maybe I could reach out to some of the local architects and ask that question.
There's a competition right now in Northampton that, I don't know, that I'm working on, that is sponsored by the city of Northampton, which is to design three houses, one at 800, one at 900, one at 1,000, with the bedrooms that I just cited. And it's actually a really interesting problem because it's particularly hard with the three-bedroom, but the, you can do it. And it's all part of the goal of the small lots, small house movement in Northampton. So part of it depends on one-story, two-story. So if it's two stories, it's more complicated because you have to take away space for a stair, but not everybody has room for 1,000 square foot, you know, if you consider lot coverage and building coverage on their properties.
So it's my understanding that Northampton doesn't actually have a limit on the sizes. What they did, if I understand correctly, is allow for the subdivision of parcels into two parcels. And then so the size requirements you mentioned are just kind of an entailment of the fact that the lots are fairly small, or is there a formal maximum square footage?
Yeah, this is a particular subdivision that is under, I don't know what the, yeah, it's a whole subdivision, so it's not an infill project per se. But still, it's an exercise in designing small houses. But as Rob was pointing out, a lot of the building stock in Amherst, like Capes, are around 1,200 square feet.
So when will this competition come to an end point and when will we have, would we be able to see what the results are? That would be very interesting.
Yeah, so it'll be exhibited at the APE gallery and then the best design building. So stay tuned.
Talking about having a planning board meeting there.
Exactly. Maybe we can do both. There we go.
When was the last zoning article passed that you just mentioned about increasing the area to the supplemental?
Well, it wasn't increasing the area per se. It was actually just allowing them to begin with. Detached supplemental units weren't allowed until, I think, 2014.
So it wasn't increasing from some number to 800 and 900, you're saying? Okay, all right, just allowing it.
So attached supplemental units were allowed. It was changing permitting for attached units to, allowed by right if certain conditions are met and special permit if other conditions are not met. And then allowing detached supplemental units by special permit.
My sense is that, you know, we've been talking a lot about owner-occupied and what the other supplemental unit would be, and 800 feels like it would always be rental and not necessarily like a sort of, I don't know, like a family or a relative or someone moving in. It feels a little smaller, but if it's just a rental, it's certainly adequate. And not that we're discouraging rentals either. I mean, we want this sort of mix of students and community, you know, people who own the houses. So I guess because we're going through all this housing discussion, I mean, that could be a quick fix, just to throw out there, but it feels like we also have a lot of other things in the air that could influence that or resolve a bigger sort of question. So I don't know, I kind of am on the fence about, you know, whether we just throw it out there or we continue to delve into, you know, this housing bigger question that we've been asking at the zoning subcommittee and see whether something comes out of that that maybe addresses this issue. So I don't really have a feeling about pushing it immediately to Springtown meeting.
Well, my sense is that it's a supply and demand question. There seems to be a demand for it and there seems to be no reason for us not to supply it. So that's why I think it's a good idea to move ahead with it. I don't think there's any harm done by doing it.
I think that one market that it does serve are the people that, for whatever reason, inherit a house, but otherwise, like they're, you know, people, they inherit the family house. They don't want to live in the big family house, but it has a value and they want to stay so they could have the, basically the apartment could be their house and then they could rent out the front. So I mean, I don't know how big of a market. It's kind of similar to an example you were talking about, a couple of planning board meetings where the owners or owner chooses to live in the smallest part, rent out the biggest part, and therefore has a source of income for, that enables them to stay in Amherst.
I think the circumstance you mentioned, Steve, is just one of a lot of different circumstances in which a family member who owns the property ends up in a house that's too big for them, you know, whether it's...
Yeah, yeah.
An empty nester, people progressing into different stages of life. I think it's pretty common that people are looking for smaller accommodations. We're just hearing from staff, the community through staff, that right now the existing regulation is too restrictive. So I don't have a problem with bringing it to Springtown meeting. I think that there's a modest amount of work to be done as far as looking at the background to it, but most of the heavy lifting was done in 2014.
And I think it has a lot going for it because it's a way of densifying without, you know, being radical. And it's, addresses a lot of the, you know, sort of concerns about affordability. So I think that is probably worth, I would agree with that, but you guys are the ones that have to...
Steve?
Yeah, yeah, Jack.
I can't really hear you too much because you're kind of like...
I'm drifting off because I'm trying to share. I'm trying to share the mic.
Subcommittee over there. I was just wondering what zones are applicable for the detached dwelling currently? Is it all residential throughout town or?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, I'll repeat.
Repeat everything you said, no.
Okay. Should we move on? Downtown, town center. I'm going to talk to this side of the table for a while. Community forum.
So some of us have had this discussion a couple times already. And I think the general feeling is that there were some good points and some not-so-good points about the town center planning forum. The, we heard, we heard, we got a lot of feedback that expressed concern about the developing form of downtown, the way the town center seems to be moving. And, but, but the dilemma is that, you know, the reason that we propose these forums is because there is a lot of demand for housing and for a larger commercial base. And so where's that, where should that go? It should go, it seems to us, it seems to go in the town center. So resolving that contradiction, which was, at least for me, one of the hoped-for endpoints of the series of forums, I think we're, I didn't, I didn't really see a resolution or a consensus developing around how to resolve that dilemma. So the steering committee for the forums has decided to step back from offering another forum because we just don't know where to go at this point. We're not sure what the next step is. So it seems, it doesn't, it seems not yet time to offer a third forum as we had hoped and planned, thought we would when we started this. I think the, the, the next steps were, you know, started to be taken at the last couple of zoning subcommittee meetings when we talked about housing issues and we started talking and thinking about 40R as a way of helping to figure out what, where the downtown is, what the downtown can be, where the transition zones are and how they function. Again, it's still vague right now, but that's, that's the direction that I see as what I'd hoped was going to come out of the forums. It didn't really emerge, at least as far as I could see, from the forums itself, but it did, the forums did help the planning board's discussion and the zoning subcommittee's discussion of these issues. And so, you know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing.
So one of the next steps is to put all of this material online and Mr. McCarthy's helping me to assemble it and all of the sheets that where people wrote down what we talked about would be nice things to see in the downtown. That's all going to be online. Steve has also typed these things up so that people can actually read them because some of the handwriting that people put on the poster boards wasn't legible. So we're going to put the activities that we did at this forum online and we hope to reach an audience that may not have been able to attend the forum. You know, different types of people, people who might have been working that night or, you know, had children at home or didn't have transportation or whatever, which we're going to really try to reach out to various communities and try to get them to tell us what they think too. Because, you know, we did have about, I think we had about 50 people at this last forum and many of them seem to share a certain point of view, but there, we know that there are other points of view out there too. So anyway, we're going to be seeking further input and then we'll see, you know, what we come up with after that. The town manager has given us until the end of January to get all the materials online. So we're going to be working diligently on that.
If, as it seems to be now the case, that there is not going to be another forum in this series, I think it needs to be said that the large majority of those in attending the December forum were very strongly against the notion of more buildings such as Kendrick Place and One East Pleasant. The overwhelming sentiment that I picked up from hopping from table to table, group to group, and from the first part of the evening, was the sense that the large-scale developments that have come up in the downtown in the last few years are not appreciated by the citizens and that we need to, that's, that was, that's my sense of what the, what the meetings revealed, both meetings, both the forums, actually. And to suggest that they were primarily about housing or primarily about economic development or both is to somewhat miss the point of what I think most of the people there were feeling, which was not so much, although they recognized both of those issues are important. The main sense, I believe, was about what downtown feels like and what we, what it's like to be there and what they, the individuals that I'm referring to, the 50 or so that were at the meeting, want downtown to be, want that area to be like. And yes, they want commercial development of a wide variety of sorts, including hardware stores and grocery stores, which are obviously market-driven and not going to be in the downtown again. And they want housing of various kinds, but they want downtown to be of, in a certain way, to have a certain feel to it. And those are articulated pretty much in that list of what we liked about, what they liked about downtown. They liked small town feel, intimacy of, and modest scale, small shops, local ownership, filled businesses, walkability, historic preservation, diversity of cafes and restaurants. I could go down the list. Those are the things that were asked for and appreciated in the town. And it wasn't about large-scale buildings. In fact, the large-scale buildings were distinctly not appreciated. And I think we need to recognize that in making planning decisions. We can't go backwards, obviously, but we can exercise restraint in encouraging additional development of that sort. That may involve adjusting zoning regulations. It certainly involves holding the line on existing regulations and not allowing additional height, additional dimensions. So I think particularly since we're not going to be able to go forward with these discussions in the future, I think we need to accept what we've learned from them, what we've got, what we've gained from them and privilege that information as opposed to the information that seems to be out there but not presenting itself. I'm suspicious of information that comes from people who said, "Well, I couldn't, I wasn't there, I didn't, you know, I'm, you know, that didn't represent me," or, "The people who represented me weren't there." Well, they had a chance to be there and they weren't there. And the people who were there were articulate about what they wanted. And I think we need to pay very close attention to the people who were there and respect what they wanted.
Chris?
I think there were some people there that were working as a group and very vocal, and I knew of many people who were there who have an opposite view, but were intimidated to speak up, because it was fairly aggressive in the talk against, we'll say, the two new buildings. But it was also in conflict a bit, because in those groups I kept hearing how they want condominiums and townhouses, and their choice was they want this cute town, but that they also want to live in it, often downsizing their homes in Amherst. And they wanted the ability, you know, and these were apartments, they wanted something that would fit their lifestyle more. So that could, that's still saying that they want building, it's just that's what these forums, I thought, were trying to do. You know, it's all about compromise, and, and for us to slowly get our arms around figuring out how to have growth and building, and balance some of the things they want, but, you know, it's impossible to have everything. And I think just going off on the new buildings is hard, because they're so new. I mean, one of them's not even built yet, and so sort of it's still like an open wound. It's, some people think it's an eyesore, and people haven't gotten used to it yet. And you have to see how this is all going to roll out, because the whole point is building up the density of downtown, having more people live there that will encourage economic development and support, maybe there could be a hardware store someday, we don't know. Anyways, I think it was a big subject to get our arms around, and I just want to remind everyone that I thought this all came out of us trying to figure out what to do with the BL also. You know, it is about defining downtown, but we're also trying to fix this broken part, and I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
I guess I'm the chair. So again, I wasn't there, and I mentioned this at the zoning subcommittee, but the group of people that can't be there are the people that can't live in Amherst, because that, there's not housing for them, or there's not a place for them to work. So they're the silent, you know, the, the silent people out there that we think would be great contributors to our, to our community, or at least some of us do. But the... So I have this great image of, I think that's the hotel in Amherst, which is where the Bank of America used to be. And it's a five-story building, so there's one, two, three, four, and then there's a fifth story sort of in an attic space. So, and then right next to it are a bunch of, those are probably 50-story buildings. But I was looking at a website that was set up by, by someone, basically, and it might be, have to do with the charter issue, I'm not sure what it was, but nonetheless, my attention was drawn to this website. And they had an image of what they don't want downtown to be, you know, it was like, preserve our, prefer, preserve our town, or something like that. They had an image of what they don't want our town to be, and they had, you know, the Kendrick Place, and then they have, this is the image of what we want our town to be, and they had the picture of the Hastings Building. And I thought, well, wait a second, the Hastings Building, or that block, was the Kendrick Place of its time. So that was jarring at its time, right? So this was a place of little wooden buildings, and somebody built up these blocks of buildings here. And it was all very jarring, and 100 years later, it's our favorite part of town. So I, I do very much see what the concern is with the new buildings being primarily rentals, and probably primarily student-related rentals. And, you know, I for one really would love to see owner-occupied, you know, condominiums, you know, in the downtown area, because I do think that we could risk becoming Bourbon Street, or, you know, something like that, if it's just student rentals and bars and pizza shops, you know, downtown. And I also miss, you know, the, the opposition to Kendrick Place, I actually really and truly don't understand, because that was a weed-filled vacant lot that nobody believed could ever have anything on it. And it's contributing, people live there, people work there, it's, it brightens up that part of town. I can see more of the opposition to One East Pleasant, because it did displace little mom-and-pop shops without a clear plan for replacing those. But I, I completely agree with you. So right now, we have to walk in the street to get around it, so there's insult to injury. But let's, let's have that discussion in another year.
So I think one important thing that came out of the discussion, and this, you know, speaks to some of the things Mr. Burt Whistle was talking about, have to do with articulation of the facades and the design of the buildings, and if we could somehow incorporate some form-based requirements or standards into our zoning bylaw, perhaps, you know, building a five-story building wouldn't be as jarring if the facade weren't, you know, actually so flat and right up on the sidewalk, if it were set back a little bit and had some articulation on it, and maybe if the roof were different or something like that. So perhaps looking at form-based code is one of the good things that may come out of the discussions about the buildings that are downtown. And I'm thinking of the space between One East Pleasant and Kendrick Place, which is probably going to be redeveloped at some point, that whole stretch of, of East Pleasant Street, and what do we want to see there? So I think that gives us an opportunity to imagine what we, what we might like to see, and maybe we don't need to adjust the dimensional requirements, maybe what we need to do is adjust the design requirements.
I should, I should mention that this was high-risk for these developers to develop these buildings. So now there's nothing really have been, nothing of that scale have been developed in the downtown area in, I don't even know how long, you know?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. And so they're taking a big risk, and to their, you know, so we should, they were addressing many of the things that we have in our master plan about densifying downtown. And so as part of that risk, they were asking to build out to the envelope as much as possible so they could get as many possible, you know, a return on their, on their investment as much as possible. So maybe you're, maybe if these buildings are successful, which we all hope they will be, then that will reduce the risk for future developers, and these kinds of discussions can happen more. But again, I'm looking at these photos here, and the hotel, you know, does have a sloped roof, you know, it's against a bunch of, so they must have had a measurement at the time that, just like we have in the zoning. You know, so they're, you know, they has a sloped roof against a whole line of parrot but that, that sort of variation on the roofline could be quite helpful. You know, it helps get the sun in better, and it helps reduce the apparent size of buildings. Oh, I'm sorry, Maria.
Oh, I was going to add on to the, sort of, the comment about what was gathered from the charrette. I, I agree that it did feel like a singular voice, we didn't have enough diversity represented, but the really useful thing that came out of that, in my mind, was how maybe for, some aspect of form-based code could be used, just because it seemed like a lot of the anxiety and what was about, you know, they didn't know what they were agreeing to, or know what the zoning code was really allowing. So we might take some baby steps in, you know, looking at certain areas and seeing, you know, it's not just about the facade and overhangs, but it's about the streetscape and the public space between the road and the building face, you know, how that sort of urban space is treated. So, yeah, I, I was sort of assigned at the zoning subcommittee to come up with form-based code, but we've gone so long that I was happy to table it for the next one. But I think I'd really like to just take some other, there, I found a lot of New England towns that have really good examples, and just take some of their suggestions for downtowns and see what it looks like in ours, you know, just maybe with some quick modeling or something, just to show, you know, here is what some form-based code might look like in our town that has worked for others, similar-sized towns, just as a fun study for myself, especially if it snows tomorrow and school begins.
That's right.
But yeah, it just, you know, studying all these towns, it really seems to, you know, fit with all the ideals we have in our master plan about walkable, livable cities that it really are at human scale. So, and some, someone, I forget who, mentioned, you know, uses have to really be a part in this, and I, I think it totally can. I think that a lot of the zoning bylaw we have now in place is really useful, and we could fold in bits of zone-based code, uh, zone-based, form-based code into the, the current bylaw that we have. So, yeah, more to come.
Chris?
So I just wanted to remind us of the building that was proposed for the Amherst motel site. That was actually very monolithic and, you know, difficult, I thought, in the beginning. They managed to do a lot of articulation of the facade, so that it actually ends up looking more like a row of townhouses than a solid building. They've incorporated a roof that is the fourth, or I guess it's the third floor now actually looks like it's part of the roof, so it kind of brings the scale down a bit. So, you know, I'm not saying that that's the best-looking building I've ever seen, but it has some of the attributes that I think could be incorporated into a form-based code that would make the buildings downtown perhaps more compatible with their surroundings. So it's just, it's worth looking at again.
Jack?
I don't know how to articulate it, but follow, following Christine's comments, I was pretty disappointed. I thought it was a little bit of a Donnybrook thing, and I want to apologize to Chris, because none of us stepped up when they were shouting you down. And at that time, you know, people were filing out that would have had some interesting ideas. And sorry, I, I definitely want to apologize on that. But anyway, for me, I, I understand, you know, I, I sat down and I looked at these two photos, and you have referenced them many times, and there are tall buildings in downtown Amherst. We don't have a bank row of, you know, four or five-story, and it, we never will. We have a couple of anchor buildings, is my opinion, but from the life of me, I don't understand the resentment of a, a building taller than two and a half stories, which I think we got in the memo from the gentleman, I forget his name.
Alan Root?
Pardon me?
I think Alan Root.
Alan Root, yeah. I'm a little bit lost, because I know we're a town that needs a tax base, that needs, we have no industrial zone. We, we, our commercial zone is, is essentially the downtown, we all know that. And, you know, it's hard to talk about taxes and revenue for the town in that point, but, you know, that's a big one, and I think that's sort of... People that understand that weren't there, I don't think, Mike. You know, they're just regular taxpayers, and they're not, they're not involved enough that, yes, they should be more involved, but, you know, it's, it's not, this, this whole thing that we're doing with the planning isn't, isn't for everyone. A lot of people can't put their hands around it. But there's some very strong opinions out there, and I, I just, I think it was out of order. It was unfortunate.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alison. Anyone else? Public comment? Other? Old Business: Amherst Housing Market Study, Continue Review and Discussion About Chapter Six Recommendations.
Well, that's, if I may, sort of been a horse I've been riding. It seems to me that what the zoning subcommittee is working on right now is basically speaking to all of the recommendations in the housing market study. And so I don't think there's any need to really continue with this as, as an old-business item, because that information is basically coming out of the zoning subcommittee, and I'm delighted that it is.
Thank you for helping jumpstart that. Any comments on that? Topic's not reasonably anticipated? New Business: Chapter 61A Withdrawal Request?
So I think I'll have to present this to you. It's a little complicated, it's unusual and different from requests that we've had in the past. You have a lot of material in your packet about this request. One of them is a map that looks like this. It's a large piece of land, shown in blue, with a little piece of land shown in yellow. Both of these pieces of land are owned by the estate of Mary Snyder. Mary Snyder and her husband have since passed away, and their heirs are trying to figure out what to do with the property. The land outlined in blue is all APR land, agricultural preservation restrictions, so that can't be built on ever. It's currently being rented to Brookfield Farm, so Brookfield Farm farms that land. The area outlined in yellow is, it's under Chapter 61A. However, the complication is that, at the time that it was put under Chapter 61A, there wasn't an actual plan that showed which portion of the property is in 61A and which portion is not. This yellow area is about four acres, I believe. The portion that is in 61A is either two or 2.2 acres, and so the other portion is not in 61A. The portion that's not in 61A includes the house. So what the landowners, what the current representatives of the estate would like to do is take out some of the portion of the yellow area that is in 61A. You may want to refer to a map that looks like this, that is a, an A&R plan. So the A&R plan is showing the square area, which includes parcel A, parcel B, and Lot 1. That whole thing is what you see in the yellow here. So what they want to do is they want to limit the amount of development that can go on in this yellow area. And the way they're doing that is they want to take this parcel B out of Chapter 61A and combine it with the remainder of the parcel that is the house lot. But they want to reserve this strip over here on the east side of the property and keep that in 61A, so that no one can ever create a flag lot on the back of this property, so that nobody can eventually build a house back here. And they would allow access to the backland that's rented by Brookfield Farm via that strip there. So that strip will, will remain in 61A. And I believe they're going to retain ownership of it. They want to sell the house lot, and they want to sell this parcel B. So the question before you is, does the town want to exercise the right of first refusal to purchase parcel B or not? And you would be advising the select board about whether you think it's appropriate for the town to come up with whatever money needs to be appropriated to purchase parcel B? Or are you of a mind to release parcel B from Chapter 61A and recommend that the town not acquire that parcel so that it can be attached to the house lot and sold along with the house lot? And again, the intention of the owners, the current owners of the property is that, that there not be an opportunity for development, for further development of this lot.
So if I may, the map, this map shows the idealized, this shows the stitched together...
That shows the zoning, I believe, doesn't it?
Oh, that's the zoning, okay. So that odd-shaped log was...
This shows, yes, this shows the APR land and the Chapter 61A land. And then the land around it, this is a conservation map, so the land around it, this, this is 61A up here, and all the areas that are cross-hatched are 61A. So this square here fits within the yellow square here.
So the town would be buying a landlocked, I mean, there's no, there's no way for the town to even access that land.
That's correct. It doesn't have frontage the way it is developed right now, the way it's configured.
And the, the intention is that the present, the estate is going to continue to own the APR land?
The estate will continue, their, their intent, their present, current intent is to continue to own the APR land and to rent it to Brookfield Farm, and to continue to own this strip and allow that Brookfield Farm to pass over that strip.
Well, you can only pass over that strip for farming purposes?
I...
Not for flag lot purpose? But if they own it, they can do what they want, yeah. Weird, okay.
They're trying to be respectful of their parents' wishes by not allowing this property to be developed. So they think that this has come up with a configuration that would not allow it to be developed. I can't guarantee to you that someone can't figure out a way to develop this, but this is their rendition of how they would prevent further development on this property. And you have the purchase and sale agreement here? I think that... I believe that the new owner has... I think that, I believe that the new owner has already purchased lot one and the new owner will be purchasing lot B once this Chapter 61A is released. So it's...
Interesting.
The price for lot, the lot is seventeen thousand for the 1.6 acre parcel B.
Any comments?
Yeah, and is it correct that if parcel A were subtracted from lot one and parcel B, it would not be possible to build a flag lot property on parcel B by going up the east side of the property?
What's the frontage requirement in?
What is the zoning district here?
Frontage is three hundred, it's three hundred some feet.
Two eighty, right, oh no, you're right, three hundred.
Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four, exactly.
No, he's forty-five, forty feet for a, for a flag?
Forty feet, but we have to know with a minimum frontage.
It's either two hundred or one fifty.
Yep.
So yes, you could do that, actually.
So you could build a...
So why couldn't they go to the other side?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, because part, you need twice, in order to create a flag lot, you need twice the lot area that's required in the district. And I am embarrassed to say, I don't know what the zoning district is here, but Mr. McCarthy might be able to figure that out pretty quickly.
All right. But of course zoning can change at any time.
Is, is the new owner going to own parcel A or is that going to stay with the estate?
It's going to stay with the estate.
Couldn't they also just do a deed restriction? Couldn't they just do a deed restriction that says...
Yeah, I think we suggested that to them, but they didn't go that route.
Interesting, okay.
The truth shall be revealed in a minute.
Deed restriction is actually more permanent because zoning can change. I digress. Anyone want to make a motion on this or...
I move that the planning board recommend the town not exercise its right of first refusal to purchase the parcel.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Okay, discussion? I see none.
Oh, it's RLD.
RLD, okay.
It's RLD, so the basic lot area is eighty thousand square feet. So in order to create a flag lot here, you'd need a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, which is four acres, which is the size of this whole parcel here. So you couldn't do a flag lot.
Right, carving our parcel A makes it, drops it below, yeah.
Okay, so, Rob, did you have a comment or...
I, I tend to agree with what you were saying. It seems like there's a better way of doing this and I can't believe that, that they wouldn't... I'm, I'm concerned that, that parcel A is, is still in play. I know it's with the estate, but it doesn't always have to be with the estate. I would, I would be more comfortable with this if, if there was an A and R that, that threw parcel A over onto the other APR land, the rest of the estate.
Well, the rest of the estate is APR, so it would have to be kind of an outlier that wouldn't be part of the APR.
Right. Yeah, that's, that, that seems...
Great. I guess, Rob, a question, so is that because you're concerned that the owners wouldn't be getting, achieving their aim or because you don't think it's suitable to have that developed as a flag lot? Looking at the map, I see two flag lots in pretty close proximity, at least two, three, four in this area, so...
No, so, so, yeah, so let me finish my thought. The fact that, that it's surrounded by APR land and, and that there is a barn already existing on, on the lot and it's only seventeen thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like a whole lot of money to me. Does that barn not have seventeen thousand dollars worth of value to a farm that might someday exist on the rest of that APR land? You know, not rented by some, some other farm, but, you know, it's not something that we can, you know, make happen now. I just think there's, this could have, this could have been done better.
Yeah, yeah.
On the other way. You know, if, if, if the town, I, I don't know if the town has, has looked at any further protection of that property. I guess, I guess APR is, is pretty, is pretty strong protection.
You can't really break an APR unless you provide the same amount. I think you have to provide double the amount of area that you take out of APR elsewhere in town. We tried it on Northeast Street and it was very cumbersome and you have to go to the legislature to get permission.
What, yeah, what, so I, so what, my concern is that, is this land usable as a farm? Standalone farm? And would it be more usable if it had a building on it? I, I don't know, so I don't know, it looks like there might be a building on it in the far top left corner there. And maybe that is part of, of the farm of that land. If so, then, then my concern is, you know, probably moot. But, but if, if, if this, if there's a possibility that this land might be a standalone farm at some point in the future, it would be nice if it had a barn with street access, i.e. parcel A and B.
Just for record, that building does appear to be a barn.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, you mean a 1.6 acre farm?
Yeah. No, 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 the, the, no, the, the farm, including all of this, if this, if this, Steve's just said that this is...
Oh, I see, I see.
This is a barn that, that looks like it might be a barn that could be attached to that property. If that property did not have, and I'm trying to think, I've, I've gone past that so many times that I, I don't, I can't remember exactly what it looks like there. The farm would be more usable if it had infrastructure. And, and so there is infrastructure there. Yeah, okay, so, so it does have, it does have...
Barn that's used for storage? There's a barn that, that says, the storage place.
So the question at hand though is, do you think that the town should purchase this lot B?
Yeah, so now I, I don't think it's necessary to consider it because it looks like that the infrastructure does exist for this farm. So, so this is, you know, it's part of what I do in my other life, so, so that's why this is, this is of concern to me, so. I don't really have any objection anymore. My, my concern has been aired and answered.
What happens in the, no. I think we have a motion in a second. So, you good? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. That looks unanimous. Moving on. That was a very interesting one. Topics that reasonably anticipated? Topics that reasonably anticipated?
I'll just tell you that next time you'll be asked to look at the ten resolves of PVPC. Remember the ten resolves?
Oh, yeah.
Top ten resolves, I have them in my office, but I didn't make it into this pack. So the next time around, you'll be seeing those and asked to...
I was actually gonna...
Oh, so maybe Mr. Jamesick would like to...
I was gonna just give a quick rundown of them.
So maybe when we get to the PVPC report, we'll do that. We, we always put the train in. Anything else for topics? Form A, A and R?
No form As. Although I will say that, given the fact, the A and R regulations, approval not required regulations state that when an application comes in, it needs to be acted on in 21 days or it's automatically considered a done deal, although there's some paperwork that has to be done. So this came in sometime in early December, I think, and you weren't going to meet until January 3rd, so we asked Mr. Schreiber to come and sign this A and R plan. So this A and R plan has been signed, so I'm just pointing that out to you, okay? But no other A and Rs.
Upcoming CBA?
CBA, ah, Spoke, yes, the Spoke Restaurant on East Pleasant Street is expanding and it's going to have a bigger outdoor area. They're taking over the area that was the sub.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, yep. And that's going to the CBA, yep.
I watched that on, they were at the select board for, because they changed ownership, right?
Yep.
I slept in trouble sleeping one night, so I watched the select. Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUV?
I don't think we have anything right now. I do believe that Applebrook Cluster Subdivision in South Amherst is going to be coming back with some minor modification, but they haven't submitted it yet. And then there's another small case, which also hasn't been submitted yet. Logtown Road is an old subdivision and two of the properties on Logtown Road have what they call a reservation of land, a strip of land. It's not an easement, it's a reservation that kind of straddles a property line and it was thought that the town may have wanted to acquire that piece of land in order to access what we call the new landfill, which is since closed. But we've determined via talking to Guilford Mooreing, Superintendent of Public Works, that the town has no interest in acquiring access to the landfill from that point. So the owners of those properties are going to be coming into you to ask for a, a change, an amendment to the definitive subdivision plan for that subdivision to remove that reservation. So you haven't seen it yet, but you will be seeing that. So it's not an easement, the town hasn't purchased it, it's just something that was set aside in case the town thought that they would need it and then the town could come in and purchase that property. But the need for that has gone by.
Questions, comments? Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports, PVPC.
Yeah, so there, there was a, a meeting that discussed the marijuana, recreational marijuana commission's, you know, charge and, and the timeline they're looking at. And I don't know that I gathered anything that we didn't already know, but that was last meeting. But I can read, and they issued their annual report, basically. But I, I can do, I can summarize these top 10 because they're kind of general. The first one is dealing with Massachusetts State Rail Plan and their emphasis is on the east-west connection between Springfield and Worcester and obviously the Knowledge Corridor between New Haven and going up, you know, through Vermont and improvements of some other rail lines. The second is, you know, supporting reducing greenhouse gas emissions and, you know, minimizing climate change. I think that was an executive order 569 that Governor Baker had. The third one was support city and towns to attain state designation as green communities. The fourth one was seeking funding assistance to help towns achieve water quality. Well, some of the towns can't afford to make the changes to achieve the water quality standards and the smaller wastewater treatment plants, so they're just trying to lend funding assistance to those particular municipalities. The fifth was supporting the recreational marijuana implementation through bylaw support. And the sixth was about the Valley Bike Share Project and supporting that. Seventh was supporting the Community Development Block Grant Program. Again, I'm just giving shorthand notes here. The eighth one was regarding the Rural Policy Advisory Commission. Again, helping the smaller rural towns in the Piner Valley Planning Commission District and supporting Complete Streets, which has, which is a Green Streets Infrastructure Demonstration Projects. And there's three, one, one in Holyoke, one in Chickapee and one in Springfield. And the last one, I'm just going to read the whole paragraph because it's a lot there. Work with Congressional Delegation in Washington as well as the Massachusetts Legislature and Governor to shape and advance legislative initiatives at the federal and state level that can benefit the Piner Valley and its residents. At the federal level, for example, support legislation to extend the EPA Brownfields Program, authorize the Water Resources Development Act, enact a comprehensive House/Senate Energy Bill and to create and advance a major nationwide infrastructure investment package. At the state level, key legislative priorities for 2017, 2018 include statewide zoning reforms, legislation enabling regional ballot initiatives, transit operating assistance for the regional transit authorities, including the PVTA, Chapter 90 local roads funding and the release of state environmental bond funds to maintain progress on Connecticut River CSO cleanup object, projects. So that's the, again, the top 10 resolves.
It's interesting, your order was different than the one in this order.
Oh, there was a draft one.
Okay, and yours is the final one?
Yeah.
Can you read the first one again?
The first one?
Yeah.
Contribute to the completion of the Massachusetts State Rail Plan update and advocate for the inclusion of three projects of interstate significance, expanded passage rail service on the north-south Knowledge Corridor, phase the implementation of an east-west rail link connecting Boston, Worcester, Palmer, Springfield, Hartford, New Haven and Montreal, and upgrading the Massachusetts segment of the New England Central Freight Rail Corridor to achieve the present day 286,000 pound weight standard.
Central SARS, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's interesting because that wasn't on the draft one, so...
Oh.
Yeah.
That's Tim Brenner, that's, it seems his, his personal mission to...
But that's often, we often have to argue that the east-west corridor is as important as the north-south corridor. Save our stop days.
I mean, he was just saying, hey, yes, it's a four hour drive, I mean, because when his meetings occur, he has a four hour, you know, one-way trip where we might be able to drive there an hour and a half from here going midday, but it's just, it gets really bad at certain times.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Anything that we as a planning board want to ask to be modified? I mean, it'd be nice to have a hypotenuse line, the Amherst-Palmer line, but should we say that?
I, I've just heard the Boston, the east-west is just, keeps getting bumped down because there's major complications with rail land acquisition.
You know, it's such a cragly, you know, trip, it's not an easy, I mean, that's why, it's always been hard to get to Boston because you have to go through the, the crags, you know, through the, versus just going down the Connecticut River Valley. Unless they were to close the Mass Pike and make that a rail line.
Besides the list of resolves, this is the time of year when typically we would be applying for the district local technical assistance grants, is that happening this year?
So we had a meeting the other day with Paul Bockelman, Town Manager, a number of staff people, and it seemed that the most appropriate thing that we could apply for would be help with to create a map, a plan, I shouldn't say a map, but a plan for connecting bike lanes and bike trails. And this is something that the TAC has been working on, the Transportation Advisory Committee. They did have a plan from the Superintendent of Public Works that they started working on, but they haven't had enough time or help to get very far with it. And PVPC is able to offer us help on this. There, there were other projects that were talked about, projects having to do with housing and a lot of other things that were mentioned, but it seemed that we already had some infrastructure here in town. We already have some bike lanes and some bike paths. We know that there are projects that are moving ahead like the Route 9 corridor project... We know that there are projects that are moving ahead, like the Route 9 Corridor project from University Drive up to the center of Amherst that the Mass DOT is working on that includes a multi-use path. We have the Bike Share Program that's coming to town. We have a couple of other things that the town has thought of from time to time, like there's a north, I don't know exactly how to describe it right now, it started out as a bike path that was going from UMass up to Meadow Street, sort of threading behind some apartment complexes. Right now, it looks like more appropriately, it will actually go on North Pleasant Street, and Guilford is working out the details of that, but we have a lot of things going on with regard to bicycling in town, so we felt like we could build on that, we also have the Neurotic Rail Trail, of course, build on that, get some help from PVPC, and finally have a plan that we could put together that would show where bike lanes are, where bike paths are, and where the gaps are, so that we can start to fill in the gaps. So that is currently the project that's on the docket to be applied for, and the applications are due next Friday, so I hope that you will all support that effort.
Okay. Moving on, community preservation, no priority? Ag Commission, still doesn't have a quorum, still hasn't met. Design Review Board?
No report right now, thank you.
Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust?
Will be meeting next week, and recently, there's also a policy subcommittee of that group, which I'm a member of, and some of you, I believe, attended the forum back in October, and a lot of the focus of that forum and some of our subsequent meetings was on promoting family housing, and we found that term somewhat nebulous, and I think we're trying to move our policy recommendations to a more concrete place. So recently, the group has been looking at a number of the housing plans that were prepared for the town, and from that, synthesizing a recommendation, perhaps in terms of a certain number of units, the housing production plan, for instance, has a very specific number of units that it proposes the town produce at different affordability levels to meet the housing goal, so that the housing trust is looking to create its own goal, and then it would in turn share that with the rest of the boards in town.
Nice. Questions, comments? Zoning Subcommittee, we've heard from UTAC?
Housing hasn't met in a while.
And, not a downtown parking working group?
I don't think we have anybody on that anymore.
I thought I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been going to the meetings.
Oh, good, I didn't know that.
It'd be easier for you to change your name to vacant.
I think it went, was going to the select board last I, didn't we vote?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we voted.
So you're our... We don't make the appointment, we just make the recommendation, right?
That's right, you were recommended, and I think I did send your name up to the select board, and you haven't heard anything.
No, I just go to the meetings.
All right, I'll remind them again.
Anything to report?
They're just working, there's not another meeting till mid-month, and staff is working on collecting data.
Transporti, oh, I'm sorry, great.
Did the Downtown Parking Working Group discuss the parking zoning article at all since Fall Town Meeting, or...
They had a debriefing, of course, there was some, there's a subgroup, subcommittee of the Downtown Parking Working Group that's for looking at the garage, so they were very disappointed, of course. You know, I think the end was just that it sort of happened on the fly a little bit, and that doesn't always work very well, because then sometimes questions arise, you know, arise at town meeting, and maybe that's where some confusion lay, and it didn't pass. So that group is still moving along the garage, so the staff is working on collecting some data and some past history and that kind of thing. They haven't met for over a month, but I anticipate they'll meet again this month. And the regular Downtown Parking Working Group, the main thing they're working on right now is sort of, they got last year a Phase 1 of a lot of recommendations that came to us, and, you know, everything from the new machines and Park Mobile. So they're collecting data on how that is going and trying to figure out, like, what Phase 2 is going to be, and whether or not a consultant is needed for that. Sorry, Jack, I'm, you're always... So that will involve, I think, over the next month or two, a new list, and I'm sure you all will see that. And that was all unofficial, of course.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Transportation Advisory, yeah.
So they're meeting next week, next Wednesday, I believe, at 4:30 in this room, if anybody wants to attend, and we do have a long list of things that we're going to be talking about.
I do believe they're on the first floor, I think, for some reason.
Oh, first floor, maybe that's true, yeah, okay. Wednesday, 4:30, yep.
Okay, report of the Chair. Happy New Year, haven't seen, didn't see you guys in December, so, hope you all had a great end of the year, and also, I'm not going to be here two Wednesdays from now, so can you... Report of Staff?
Oh, we have a lovely new planner, and we're so happy about that. It's really great, because we've been down a person for about two years now. So, her name is Maureen Pollock, and she is an associate planner, she's worked in Greenfield, she's also worked at PVPC, she's very accomplished, she knows, she's got a master's degree from UMass in planning, she knows GIS, she's worked with ZBAs and planning boards and conservation commissions and all of those people, so I think you'll find her a big help to all of us, and I hope you get to meet her soon.
Awesome.
I just wanted to say the, who was the fellow that left a while back, but he's on the commission now, begins with a B?
Jeff Bag.
Yeah, Jeff Bag, so he was there, this kind of, and he was touting how Amherst, you know, was way ahead of the curve.
Was he?
Yeah.
Where is he now?
Well, he, he's with that, he's with that commission.
Oh, right, of course.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Oh, and also maybe with the Regional Commission, too?
Yeah.
Near Worcester?
He's in Worcester, right.
Yeah.
We're now fully staffed with the addition of Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Topons and Maureen Pollock, we're all set to go.
All right. Off to a good year.
Yes.
All right, see you guys, I'll see you guys in February.